All right, so we're going to continue on with our Calaveras County Board Supervisors Meeting for October 27, 2015, and we're on Agenda Item Number 25. That would be Mr. Mauer.
Good afternoon. Peter Mauer, Planning Director. This is a request to extend the contract with Augustine Planning Associates and increase the compensation amount by $10,000. We're close to wrapping things up with the work that I've needed her to do, but some of the work that the Planning Commission has asked that we enhance some of the information sort of beyond my staff capabilities and the time that I have directly available to do so, and so I need to ensure that I have the ability to complete the work that Commission is doing. Supervisor Olivera, you witnessed the Planning Commission last, or yeah, last week I guess it was, and saw how thorough they are in their review of the process, and some of the additional information they've requested is technical in nature, and we just need to have that area of expertise. So I'm asking approval of this contract amendment. It would extend the term of the contract to the end of next June, as well as add $10,000 to the amount. The money was included in my budget. I had some additional money I'd set aside for this purpose in case it was necessary, so there's no additional cost to the county other than what was already budgeted in the Planning Department's budget. Are there any questions?
Any public comments?
Either somebody doesn't know what they're doing, or cost of inflation. Started at what, $10,000? Now we're up at $123,000. That's almost, well, close to almost 30 percent increase each time. Can you do business like that? I mean, I'm sure it's the public's fault asking questions, but either you anticipate what something like this costs, or you don't know what you're doing. Can you do it in your private business? A contractor comes in your house, they say this is what it's going to cost you, then every year they hit you up with 10 grand? Either the contractor doesn't know what the hell he's doing, or you're a sucker. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Bring it back to the Board. Board comments?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Number 26. Public Works authorized purchase of a new Premier TG 5000 tub grinder in the amount of $476,412.60 from RDO Equipment Company under an agreement between Calaveras County and the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA.
Well, since Mr. Crowitz isn't here, I don't know a lot about grinders, but it is to handle the green waste material down at Rock Creek, allowing the portable one that they have that cannot handle the workload to be mobilized at other sites. It, according to County Code 3.28-123, we can piggyback on agreements, and this purchase is made under the agreement with the National Joint Powers Alliance, which was executed in February 2008, and therefore we do not have to go through a formal bidding process because it's already been done, and this is the best price for this piece of equipment. This piece of equipment was included as, and approved by the Board as a capital asset in the 1516 adopted budget.
Okay. Any public comments?
Is there any warranty on this use of equipment?
I'm looking. It's a piece of, I think, I believe it's a new piece of equipment, so.
It is new.
So I would imagine there is definitely a warranty on it.
Yes, they have a warranty.
Page 264 lists the warranty.
Yep, there it is. If you can, I can't read it, but.
I had a very quick question. Is the $476,000 coming out of, you said, capital assets? I'm not sure. Is that general fund, or is this money coming from the NJPA?
It's from the solid waste fund.
Okay. Any other public comments? I have one question. Is, is there a possibility that a, I know not all of it, but a portion of this can be covered because of the use that's going to be required by?
I don't believe so, but we can check on it.
Because FEMA, or the state of FEMA, one of the two, said that, you know, they may not cover the whole cost of something, but they would look at, consider that the workload has going to be increased tremendously, and, and so if you were to go out and lease something like this, at least that portion of it could be.
I, I use a charge could be associated with it if we have it here in time to, that we're using it for fire-related needs, we can charge a percentage, or a, a usage charge on the equipment.
But we would have to predetermine what that, that's going to be before they leave, before benefits leave, right?
Right. And, and we would actually have to have the grinder in time to actually use, to determine what that is. And we'll have more detail on exactly the best way to claim, and how to claim, and what is claimable after tomorrow's meeting.
Any other comments from the Board?
It's at least a two-year warranty on it.
Yeah.
I was trying. You're going to have to read.
Yeah, so except for the warranties expressed and specifically made herein, RDO makes no other warranties, blah, 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 and then.
The purchase order indicates the warranty. Page 264.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are we going to hear from our Public Works Director, Mr. Crowitz? I understand he had a 1:00 meeting. It's probably delayed by that meeting.
I, I would assume that the meeting ran long and that he won't be here.
I, I do have some, a number of questions I'd like to have addressed by Mr. Crowitz.
If they're technical in nature, then we'll need to table this item until the next meeting so that he can be here to answer those, because if they're of technical nature, I will be of no help.
That's why I'm asking. It's technical nature.
I have a, a lot of significant questions, and I'm not trying to throw water on what Jeff's doing. He's working incredibly hard. I appreciate what he's doing, but I really want to pose the thought, even if we do table this today, is this a business that we should even be in anymore? And our, our cost of a ton of garbage at Rock Creek, and I'm getting different numbers, and I try to add this up myself, there really needs to be an analysis done of it. And since our budget hearing where I brought this up, Jeff has been so busy with the fire, I haven't even considered adding to his, to his burdens with it, but the, the cost of us handling a ton of garbage out at Rock Creek is somewhere like $120 a ton to $140 a ton. And then the cost that I hear of taking it out of the county, and I have put a significant amount of energy into understanding this, is where we could, we could truck this out of the county for $40 a ton. And when we buy equipment like this huge capital purchase, that's actually going to increase our cost per ton of garbage. And then the, the other factor too, to consider, the, the only way we could really justify something like this is if we had a lot of garbage coming into it. In other words, if we were to get the adjoining counties to bring their garbage here, and even that might not be enough to justify this. We, we have our two adjoining foothill counties. Alpine really doesn't produce enough to be a significant factor, plus we have other arrangements with them anyway in dealing with solid waste. Toolumi and Amador both take their garbage elsewhere, and the reason they do that is because they can do that cheaper than handling it themselves in their own landfills. With the way the state requirements are going on what goes into the garbage, there is going to be significantly less going into a garbage dump than we put into it now in the next 10 years. And that means that these, these landfills are going to be working harder and harder to get the business of a county that does not have their own landfill. In other words, I suspect that the price of us hauling our garbage out to another landfill will actually cost less in the coming years, or at least not go up. I, I think before we spend a half million dollars worth of taxpayers' money, and I don't really care what fund it comes out of, it is still money that we're responsible for, we need an analysis of, number one, should we even be in this business? Rock Creek is an 1,100-acre landfill, and of course we could continue to open up cells for a long, long time on that landfill. And number two, would it be cheaper for us to take our garbage elsewhere? And I, and an analysis needs to be done of that. I've spent a lot of time in the last nine months studying this and learning about it, and I, with the information that's before us, I can't even come close to spending a half million bucks on this grinder. I know what the grinders do. I've seen it. I've seen it work in landfills up at Truckee and in Sacramento, but they have the volume to justify those things. And when they do put those to use, you can also get revenue out of using them. We do not have the volume, in my opinion, to do this from the information that I have at this moment, and I don't see us having that volume in the future. And we do have a problem with our landfill. And this problem didn't just occur. As early as last year, in 2014's budget workup, there was a warning on the Rock Creek part of it to start to work on solutions going forward, and I'm not sure, just figuring out how to add more to the landfill is going to solve that. At this time, I would recommend that we table this until Public Works Director Crowitz is back.
I think Jeff is on his way.
Okay.
When you say garbage, Steve, are you referring to the green waste too?
It's all, it's all part of the package, okay? And you can't, when, when you say that you're handling garbage at 120 to 140 a ton, that doesn't mean the garbage that you pick up on the side that goes into the landfill is the only cost to it, and that's why I add this cost to that. There are a whole bunch of costs that go to the ton of garbage. And right, right now, our costs are extraordinarily higher than going to other counties and using their landfills. In other words, there's a reason why Amador and Toolumi runs their garbage to another area. And I think an analysis needs to be done going forward. Would we be better off financially just to close the, our landfill in the near future and enter into a contract with another county's landfill? And I don't think we've done that analysis yet. And I think before we buy something this expensive, that question needs to be answered. Because of Jeff's schedule and other people in Public Works' schedule, we have not, we have tabled our solid waste task force meetings until January, and as I said before, Jeff's white description of Jeff Crowitz as a twirling dervish, I think it was, is very accurate. He's very, very busy right now. I haven't wanted to pour a lot more on his shoulders, but I don't think that we can justify this with this information here.
Okay. Hi, Jeff.
Jeff.
How you doing? Did you, you didn't run, did you, down here?
Pardon?
Did you run down here?
Not very far.
Okay.
No twirls on the way.
Yeah.
Jeff Crowitz, Director of Public Works. Did anybody explain what a tub grinder is?
Nobody explained anything.
We're, we're just starting.
We're going to ask the expert.
Okay. A tub grinder is, as Supervisor Kearney indicated, a very expensive piece of equipment. This piece of equipment, I believe, is what, $450,000 or so? $476,000? A tub grinder will take a tree, large tree, or a tree root, and reduce it to wood chip in a matter of minutes. Okay? It's very big. Typically, at the landfill, we would go out with a contract to bring a tub grinder onto the landfill site and grind up the tree roots and the large trees that were brought to landfill for disposal. Those contracts were in the neighborhood of $50,000 a year. When I got here in March, we had a problem with one of the latest contracts that we had at the time, where the contractor did part of the work, didn't do part of the work, and sent us an invoice to be paid for all of it. I refused to pay it, as anyone would. We negotiated out a payment for work that was done and then closed the contract for the work that was undone. The logs were still there. The roots were still there, and we were given a notice of violation for having flammable materials that were sitting on the landfill site. So we were being damned if we did and damned if we didn't. As I spent a little more time in Public Works and started looking at solid waste as a larger picture, and in April, I got a notice of violation that I was exceeding the storage of green waste at the Red Hill Annex, okay? Where I was bringing in about 2,000 cubic yards a day for the operation days of Friday through Monday. If you add that up, and that's math that I can do in my head, that's about 8,000 cubic yards. My storage capacity limit by permit is 10,000 cubic yards. So if I didn't process that waste, I couldn't open the next weekend. When I opened the next weekend, sure enough, I got hit with a notice of violation. The reason I couldn't process that weekend is because I have a linear grinder that must be hauled around and is permanently deployed down at Rock Creek. Questions?
Why don't you talk for a moment?
Yeah.
What's a linear grinder compared to a tub grinder?
A tub grinder will take much larger pieces of debris, as it were, or logs or root balls, and it will grind it up in much larger pieces, quickly. A linear grinder actually is a long piece of equipment that is top-loaded in ground, and then what ends up coming out of a conveyor belt is a stream of finer ground wood waste.
Thank you.
And that will run at about three to five cubic feet per second. This is pretty fast. That's pretty fast, and it also segregates the, the metals, like nails and, and plates and that kind of stuff that's in there, and then we can, then recycle the metal, so.
Which, which beats the heck out of our other grinder, right?
Yeah. Well, they both have their purposes, and they both have their use. So for the type of material that's coming out to the Red Hill Annex, which is pine needles, trees, limbs, that kind of stuff, in, in, in a large amount, that linear grinder will eat that up. Regularly, at Willseville, when we hit that 10,000-yard mark, we truck the linear grinder up to Willseville, and we'll grind up that 10,000-yard pile in about two and a half days. Okay? And then we'll truck it out. And we generally hire the trucking out because we don't own a walking bed trailer. A walking bed trailer is a trailer that is hauled by a large tractor, trailer rig, that'll handle 100 cubic yards of green waste, as opposed to a roll-on dumpster, which will handle 40, or 20, or 12, or eight, or three. And so the cost to move this material from Willseville to wherever it needs to go, be it a, a waste-to-energy plant, or an orchard that wants to use it as a wood mulch, or to an area in the fire, it costs me the same amount, whether I'm running 100 cubic yards or I'm running 40 cubic yards. It doesn't take much math to figure out that we can pay for a walking trailer fairly quickly. When I put together this request this fiscal year for the tub grinder, the purpose in mind was so that I could have the tub grinder permanently deployed at Rock Creek and the linear grinder permanently deployed at Red Hill Annex, with the exception of those two times a year I need to truck it up to Willseville to take care of that pile. So it was a pretty good plan. I thought it was a great plan. And since then, I have stopped all green waste from going into landfill, and I have got a number of streams that are actively working at diverting that out of our landfill space and giving it new life. So for example, and I can now speak to this where I couldn't before, Gambi, who runs our transfer stations, has gone into the business of producing wattles that are full of pine needles. We've done some initial testing on those, and they do reduce sediment in water flow to below detectable or legal limits. And as you know, pine needles are quite high in acid. Ash is quite low, very base, and you mix them together and you have a neutral situation. So pine needles, in many places, will be a better post-fire option for erosion and sediment control than a straw wattle.
Another question?
Fire away.
Pine needles, are they ground up and put in the wattle?
No, they're going in whole. We've done it both ways, but what ends up happening is we don't get that much benefit of the ground pine needles in terms of reduction in what's called NTUs, which is the measurement. That's the unit of measurement for turbidity within water. But, and it also reduces our water flow through there. So I'm not getting a lot of benefit, and then they're much heavier to handle, so you can't work them as quickly. So for me, I can have one or two people work 150-foot-long roll of that very quickly, whereas if it was ground, it would take twice as many people, or I'd have to use half the length of roll. Okay? So Gambi is busily making my pine needle wattles. The idea came to them when they answered an order out of the Tahoe region for 8,000 linear feet of pine needle wattle, because up in Tahoe, the people were hand-stuffing the wattles with pine needles. Okay? And so they couldn't produce very much of them, and they were very expensive. Gambi was able to figure out how to use equipment, which they purchased, and now they can mass produce, and right now they're running at about 3,000 feet a day. I expect them to hit about 5,000 feet a day within another couple of weeks, once they kind of practice.
Almost a mile a day.
Almost a mile a day. Now, that doesn't say much when I'm estimating that I could use about 1,000 miles of wattle within our fire area. That doesn't do me much good, but it, it helps. It helps significantly when you start comparing that to what is the cost of putting pine needles in the landfill. Anyway, be that as it may, did you have another question?
No.
Okay. Stop me anytime, because I'll go. So we did some research. We found this tub grinder. We know it'll work. The manufacturer gave us incentives to the neighborhood of $60,000 to $70,000 if we could pull the trigger before the month was out. They also offered to let us rent one of their units to get us through the fire. Okay? This unit is almost completed and manufactured. I would love to be able to sign a purchase order today, or tomorrow, and have this deployed. One of the reasons that it's so critical, I think, to deploy it is it gives me the ability to deal with whole trees. It gives me the ability to deal with any kind of green waste, wood waste, recycled construction waste, and if you recall what was put into the emergency ordinance, I put in the rudiments of a green waste recycling program within there as part of my compliance with my compliance order, my current LIP. So that was into that ordinance that you passed a couple of weeks ago? Three weeks ago?
It was a week ago.
Last week? Time seems to be getting away from me here. So is this expensive? Yes. Do I disagree with Supervisor Kearney that we must, absolutely must, do an analysis that looks at the long-term cost of landfill versus, versus what it would cost us to deploy our solid waste to adjacent counties such as San Joaquin? I fully agree. Does that rise to the level of putting this purchase off now until we can get that answer? That I disagree with. We will never be free of a green waste issue within Calaveras County unless we can burn the other half shortly. Okay?
Even then, we won't be.
Well, the western part of the county doesn't generate a lot of green waste. The eastern part of the county does. Okay?
We're going to be contributing to, like, black waste right now.
It, it doesn't matter. You, you water this down, you control your dust, you know.
Is it the same, is it similar to the machine that PG&E was using up on Jesus Maria?
I never saw that.
Because they had, they had something similar to that, where they were feeding whole trees into it, and it was just shooting out, very nicely chewed up chips.
Yep. Then that would be it. If they're throwing whole trees in, yeah, absolutely. If it's eating up a whole tree, like you would expect your little yard grinder to eat up a one-inch branch, yeah.
That was pretty cool to watch.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a, it's a yard grinder on steroids.
How, how many, let's see, how many days a year do you, or months a year, would you think that you would use this?
Well, I think that when I move the linear grinder up to Red Hill Annex, I will be using the linear grinder Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays when the annex is closed, and then I will be trucking the, the green waste out. Then I anticipate using the tub grinder if we leave it at Red Hill, as opposed to deploying it up into the fire burn area, which is a different choice that we could make, because the potential treatment of burned timber is a significant issue for us, and I'll talk to that in a little bit. But if it was down at the Rock Creek site, I anticipate that we would be using it probably one to two days a week. And as you recall, within the new budget, you gave me three positions, two landfill worker, one, and one operator. That would comprise the green waste crew. The green waste crew would be grinding, you know, three days a week at Red Hill and two days a week at Rock Creek. And that gives me overlap if I needed to grind more at Rock Creek. The Rock Creek grinding, of course, is going to be the giant stumps and the giant logs.
Let me ask you a question, then.
Surely.
If we were, the more I learn about our solid waste, the more convinced I am that we can take it out of the county for less money and deal with it here. But that being said, when dealing with this green waste, would we need to chip that up before we haul it out?
Um, yeah.
Because you're talking tree roots and logs that don't take up every cubic inch of a hauler.
Yeah. We would, we would essentially kill the program in transportation costs. Our transportation costs are probably the single greatest cost item to our solid waste operation today, and it is subject or victim to the cost of oil, the cost of fuel. Okay?
What do you mean, hauling it to another landfill?
Hauling it to another landfill, finding another home for it, and if we're hauling it untreated, it will take me 10 trips to make out for one trip treated.
You're talking green waste. You're not talking about the total program, though?
I'm, I'm talking about the green waste component. One of the, the failings of our solid waste program has been that we, it was a solid waste program, and green waste was never considered, and so we had no way of paying for green waste. We had no ordinance. Our ordinance still is silent on green waste. Our ordinance speaks to the solid waste fee, allowing every single resident of a resident equivalent unit to have two cubic yards of household waste per week at the landfill. It's silent as to bringing and operating transfer stations. It's silent as to recovery of recyclables, and so while it was quite, I think, for its time, and its time was 1989, 1990, 1991, 1992, when that all got put together, it was quite visionary. But by 2001, 2002, 2003, it was behind the times from a regulatory perspective. And our inability to change with time, and it was quite clear to us in 1989 what was happening and the timeframe in which it was happened, we didn't respond, and as a result, our costs are higher than they need to be. So to answer your question, is it less expensive today to haul our solid waste out of county and dispose of it? My gut answer would be yes. Okay? Is that going to be true when we get a handle on the green waste? Questionable. Is it going to be true five years from now? Probably not. And it is our duty, together, Board and Public Works and Admin, And it is our duty, together, Board and Public Works and Admin, all of us, to look at this from a long-term perspective. And what is in the best interest of the citizens of the county, long-term? And again, I will put up to you the example of Sonoma County, who sold the operational rights of their landfill to a private operator. And you look at what's happened to their programs and their programs are going out of business. Their green waste program, their mulching program, no longer exists. Okay? And the costs of their landfill are now in excess of $100 a cubic yard for disposal. We're not there. Calaveras County is not there. And we have a much larger landmass and a much smaller population. So one would expect that our costs would be high, but they're not. When do you get your answer? When do you get your answer? Just as soon as I can get a contract in place for that piece of the study, I can give you that answer. I have really been stopped in the last seven weeks from my ability to put contracts out to subject area experts, technical experts, that can give us that answer. The answer to your question, is it cheaper to haul waste out of county than it is to process it at our own landfill? We may very well come to that. But in the near term, we still have a responsibility. If we shut down the landfill today, we have a responsibility to maintain that for the next 30 years. That doesn't come at no cost. That cost is relatively high. And so we would not shut down the landfill and then give the prorated remainder of the $150 fee back to the residents. We wouldn't do that because the costs are going to go on for 30 more years.
Well, you wouldn't be giving the fee back to them anyway, wouldn't you? If you're hauling their garbage out of the county, basically whether you shut the landfill down or not, that's invisible to them. Because you'd still, Rock Creek may not be your landfill, but you'd still have it probably as a transfer station out there. I don't have a problem with preparing for the future. And if, I'm not convinced that the cost of trucking our garbage out of the county is going to go high. I think it's going to go the other way because these landfills, the one thing I found, there's a lot of competition to get your garbage out there. And I think that's going to get greater as the garbage going into them decreases, is my guess. But I can sit here and guess all day until somebody actually studies that I agree with your job. And I know you've been very busy, so I've been reluctant to add to that heap lately, but.
Solid waste heap.
I was wondering if you got a pick-up on that. I thought I did it real quickly, though.
So Jeff, without the purchase of this, Red Hill does not open in regards to green waste?
Red Hill will open, but I would probably limit it to, for the, when the weather is good, I would probably, would not be able to operate more than two weekends in a row without moving the tub grinder up, process the waste, so that I don't get hit with the notice of violation in excess of my material. One of the reasons Red Hill has been closed is not that I haven't had a tub grinder, it's that I haven't had a water system at Red Hill. And to me, collecting 10,000 cubic yards of burnable waste at Red Hill is both irresponsible, without a water system for suppression, at least until help can arrive, is irresponsible. So the tank got put in, the plumbing is going on today and tomorrow. I expect my temporary tank to start filling. I will go from a capacity, a storage capacity of about 2,000 gallons to about 15,000 gallons. That's less than half of what I think I need in the dry months. But I have been given the permission to come back to this board to develop a permanent water system up at Red Hill Annex to be able to handle and put in a true green waste facility that is centrally located within the county. And that's another advantage to that facility, that it is centrally located in the county. So I can take green waste from the Ebbets Pass corridor, bring it to Red Hill Annex, treat it there, truck it directly up to Willseyville, or truck it directly to Mountain Ranch, and deploy it onto lands where I'm trying to do erosion and sediment control and watershed restoration. So, and once I get it open and I have a water system in there, I will make the call for green waste. Bring me your pine needles, bring me your waste. If I have a linear grinder there and staff to run it, then I can leave that open every week of the year. So it's part of a bigger picture of what we're trying to do. The one thing that I can tell you is that, one guarantee I can make for you is that in the future, the amount of solid waste that is generated from each household is going down. And our report that we put together and then discovered errors in and finally corrected said that from 2013 to 2014, we went from a four-pound-per-day average generation rate per household to three pounds-a-day average generation rate per household. That means the difference of being on the high end of the state average and being on the low end of the state average. So it's hard for people to tell me that our solid waste system and our recycling education program is not working. So the future says that we're going to have less and less solid waste going into the landfill. My next cell of landfill will not need to be as large as the last cell. And the cell after that will not need to be as large as the last cell. But for us to go out of the business right now before we have the data, I think is premature. For us to delay deployment of a green waste program, I think would be counterproductive to the recovery efforts we need to make on this fire. Further, I do believe that with a little bit of help and technical expertise, there is a way for us to justify a portion, or all, of the purchase of this tub grinder as a necessary piece of equipment for us to deal with this fire incident. And that's the goal, and that's where I'm going. So how much of it? Some of it at least. All of it? That would be nice. But I think what we have to do is we have to look at, how many hours a day am I going to be running that tub grinder doing fire recovery efforts? And for how long? And what is the expected useful life of that grinder? And whatever it is that I use on this fire should be reimbursable. Unless, of course, a federal auditor doesn't agree with me. And that's possible. But I think it's a pretty good argument.
They use anything like that on rim fire?
No, they don't. Because the rim fire is completely different than what we have here. The rim fire is all on federal land. And so what they did for the rim fire is that they were not worried. They did the hazard tree removal along the Forest Service roads that the public would use. And the rest of it, they left stand. Then they went out with a series of contracts over the last several years for salvage. Most of the salvage logs coming in now are beetle infested and they have no value because they've been standing too long. But it doesn't matter. Sierra Pacific Industries, who's running the local mills, does not want our burned logs. They have more than they can deal with. We have a market for the burned logs, but the market for the burned logs is much smaller than the number of burned trees we've got. So we have to approach this in a much bigger picture. We have to deploy some of these burned trees to the waste-to-energy sites. We have to grind. We have to use some of them for erosion and sediment control BMPs. Some of them, we should leave standing for habitat. But it's going to take a holistic approach to be able to deal with this current issue that we've got. And it's going to take us a while to recover. And that's notwithstanding my exigent circumstances that are coming our way in the form of weather.
You have me convinced, okay? But I wasn't unconvinced before. But the thing that, because of the needs that we have for the fire, but before, before any more capital purchases, I am asking you to find a way to do an analysis of dumping a ton of garbage here and what it's going to cost us. Because what I have seen is it is cheaper to run it out of the county than dump it in Rock Creek. And we're very close to needing to open up a new cell out there, which I'm not, I know you know that. Okay? But we are not very close to rat-holing the money to do that.
Supervisor Kearney, I really appreciate your fiscal concern. And I stand by it. And I believe that a person like me, who has been spending the public's money for the last 30 years, should be watched and should be watched very closely. So I do appreciate that.
Well, you're very fast.
What?
You're very fast.
Yes. And just because I make a call based on what I know or what I've learned or what my past experience is, doesn't necessarily mean it's the right call for the citizens of Calaveras County. So I appreciate your oversight. This particular one, the side of the green waste program, the question to be asking is the one that my deputy director has asked me on a number of occasions. Do we want to be in the green waste business or do we not want to be in the green waste business? And his answer is, no, we don't want to be in the green waste business because we don't want to be in the position or the hassle of having to take care and treat this green waste and having the expense and having it paid for and all this kind of stuff that goes on and on and on. And I disagree with him. I said, we have a responsibility to reduce the fuels and the fuel loads in this county so we don't have catastrophic forest fire that destroys our economy, that destroys our welfare, has potentially bad impacts on our public health. And so, you know, am I willing to send the garbage out? Hell, yes. Am I willing to get rid of a green waste program? Not very. Because it is with us. It will be with us. We are growing it faster than we can treat it. And this fire is as clear of a picture of mismanagement over decades of anything I've ever seen.
A century.
Pardon?
A century.
A century. It's at least a century. It could be more than that. But, look.
Well, how do we study this so that we don't have this argument? Because I know a lot that I didn't know a year ago. And it is concerning. We don't have the money to open up a new cell. I've heard the cost of $8 million to do that.
I think that's high.
Well, what if it's $4 million? We don't have $4 million.
No, we don't.
Okay? And if we're spending money on capital purchases like this, okay, and I think about hauling out of the county, and I've seen stacks of logs, and I've seen the root stacks and things like that out there. If those are being ground up, is this actually going to be part of transporting the stuff out of the county in the future if we do that?
No, I would not transport green waste out of the county. It has too much value in county. And I have cash, it has a cash value.
Well, what if we were hauling the rest of the garbage out of the county and we kept the green waste here?
That might be, that might very well be where we're going. So to answer your question, how quickly can we put it together and give you an answer? My suggestion is come into my office, let me show you the scope of work, the individual I've identified that I would like to work on this, who has the background, the wherewithal, the expertise and the experience to produce the report, giving you fact-based summaries of what it costs us to haul versus what it costs us to landfill. And let's look at that unto itself. Okay? And we can then make judgments based on fact, not something else. But again, to me, the green waste program is integral to the protection of the county's health, safety, and welfare. Much more so than the, whether we are landfilling our solid waste in a landfill at Rock Creek. I don't want you to say just dropping it off at Rock Creek. It sounds bad. Because creek and garbage, you know what I mean? But the solid waste program and the green waste program are two components of our integrated waste management. Okay? And they are the two major components of it.
What is the other uptake and work for this that you see in the near future besides the fire? I know the fire's going to be big, but there are other, there are other things up in that area, up in Mike's area, that are accumulating, right?
Yes, I've got a lot of things percolating up there. Because on September the 10th, my biggest priority from a big, giant picture in the county was, how do we reduce fuels? How do we eliminate fire ladder? How do we thin out the forest? How do we start replacing burnable chaparral with oak woodland and low elevation forest? How do we protect ourselves against fire? How do we essentially start cleaning house and making plans for how CAL FIRE would deploy to protect the subdivisions on the Ebbets Pass corridor? Those are the types of things that, to me, are big picture and are very important and critical to do.
Right, and then what, in short term, though, isn't there a bug kill that's starting to have an impact?
Well, that bug kill is more of a reflection of the unhealthiness of the forest and what's happening to the water table. One of the things that happens when you over-brush or over-grow or over-forest a given area is that you starve your water table. And as you starve your water table and you starve the trees that are competing for a scarce resource, and then you go through a number of years of drought, the trees are weakened. As soon as they're weakened, they become a receptacle for bugs, bark beetles. As soon as a bark beetle hits a tree, it's dead. It then moves on to the next tree. It goes for the weakest trees. So this is great thinning, and it's part of a natural process. The problem is that a bark beetle killed tree is a fuse, like the fuse on a stick of dynamite would be, to a crown fire. And a crown fire is what kills an entire forest. A ground fire doesn't kill a forest if you don't have a canopy and you don't have a fire ladder. It goes right through, those cold areas that go right through. The property where I live in Mountain Ranch, it was a relatively cold fire. Yeah, we lost a lot of trees, but we didn't lose all the trees. Okay? So that creek coming off of the property where I'm living, yeah, it's going to have some sediment in it, but it ain't going to be terrible, at least not contributing from the piece of property that I'm living on. Upstream, yeah, it's going to be much worse. And yeah, West Murray Creek is a water body in danger within the next three to six weeks.
The tub grinder does not get rid of the pine needles?
No, but the pine needles going into an erosion and sediment control BMP for deployment above, say, 2,000-foot elevation up and down the state of California is a marketable entity. Is a marketable entity. And at this point in time, I have been giving the pine needles to this effort. Because I have such a benefit of them not going into the landfill. Right? If I can give them away or put them in the landfill at a cost of roughly $2,000 a cubic yard, it seems to me to be well worth that. I talked to them and I said, when you start making a profit, I'm expecting you to share it with me for the natural resources that I am providing with you, to you. So I expect to start having an income stream coming back once they get up into production. By the way, they are selling their pine needle wattles for less than they are available on the open market. And yes, we're using a biodegradable netting. So you can stake them in place and leave them alone and walk away.
Mr. Crowvis.
Sir.
So what I'm understanding and what I'm hearing is that we have a process where we can get rid of our pine needles without paying $11 a ton to haul them. At a cost to our residents up in my district and in Supervisor Wright's district, the western, in the eastern part of the districts. In addition to that, we have a method where we can take our bark beetle trees, turn them into a possibly marketable product by chipping, and use that to maintain our forests and with proper management, prevent wild forest fires that we're experiencing. Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes and no.
No, this is what my constituents want to know.
Okay. I have to take that apart.
Please do.
Okay. The $11 per cubic yards in transportation cost is the cost that our partner, who has a greenway site up in Avery, charges residents to dispose of pine needles. That is his calculus on how he can treat those pine needles.
That's where our folks take that.
That's right. And that calculus includes his processing cost, the transportation of those in a walking trailer to the waste-to-energy sites, what a lot of people like to call COGEN, the one in Sonora, and what it costs him to haul it to Rock Creek. Those are his costs. His $11 per cubic yard gives him a profit for those pine needles.
I understand that.
Okay? What does it cost me to get pine needles delivered to the Red Hill Annex by the residents? Nothing, other than me leaving the annex open and staffed. Okay? Four days a week, Friday through Monday. What happens to those pine needles that make it to Rock Creek? Not Rock Creek, but Red Hill? Gambi's running the facility. He takes the pine needles to his facility. He manufactures the wattles and he sells the wattles.
He transports from Red Hill to his facility and manufactures the wattles.
That's correct.
At no cost to us.
No cost to us.
What does it cost for our residents to dump off two cubic yards of pine needles at Red Hill when it's up and off?
What should it cost or what does it cost?
Give me both.
Okay. What does it cost? It costs nothing. What should it cost depends. If that resident has already deposited two cubic yards for that particular week, it should cost them $4 per cubic yard, or $8 for a two-yard load. But that's what our But that's what our ordinance says it should be. We have not yet been enforcing our ordinance.
So if we elected to go ahead and transport that unprocessed green waste by other means other than grinding, and I'm listening to Supervisor Kearney's suggestion, and I'll be quite honest with you, I'm listening with a lot of attention to both sides of this argument, if it's an argument. We still have a cost of transporting that particular green waste to an outside facility. Am I correct there?
Yes and no.
I'm waiting.
Wouldn't you love to have me on the stand?
I'd love to, you are. Short of order.
Thanks for the vote of confidence. Right now, I have an ongoing contract both with Gambi, and they do some trucking, most of the trucking that Gambi does is enroll off containers, 20 to 44 yard containers. For larger haulings, I have a contract with Tiger Lines where they're hauling 100 cubic yards at a time. They're charging me $95 per hour, okay? That's using walking trailers. I believe I've gone back to you for five amendments or four amendments on the Tiger Line contract. I think CAO says five. And the contracts have gone up because annually our costs are going up. Why are our costs going up? Because as our solid waste volume goes down, we've had a commensurate rise in green waste. Okay? In the end, is it cheaper to treat green waste or solid waste? The answer is obvious. I don't need a double-lined landfill with water quality and, and methane gas monitoring and 30 years of maintenance after I shut the facility down. Green waste can go on to an orchard, can go on to burned land, can go on to any agricultural operation I want, or we want or they want. Would we come to the point one day where we might be charging our residents for the use of that, that mulch? Maybe, maybe not. But we're not quite there yet, I haven't got a system in place, but I'm trying to get there. Did I answer your question, Counselor?
You did.
Thank you.
You did. So with that information, we're looking at long-term fix for this, not within a two-year, five-year period.
Our repair on this fire, the recovery effort on this fire, you know, if you ask me how long is it gonna take, how much money you got for me? Give me 45 million, I'll do it in two years.
You want me to write the check now or just wait next week?
It's just money and staff. And if I can't get it from money and staff, I'm gonna get it another way. We're gonna do it. And the question becomes, do we do it quickly? Do we do it over a period of time or do we do it over a long period of time? The longer we wait, the slower we do it, the more damage we take on. It's pretty easy. This isn't rocket science, this is mud. Sorry, this is not about a tub grinder.
Yeah, future mud.
More questions on the tub grinder?
I just had, I did, I pulled up a tub grinder on, online, a couple of them.
Yeah.
And saw the rental values or what they charge to rent. And it's about 3,000 bucks a day to rent one.
Well, I think we're gonna get more than 100 days use out of it.
Yeah, and so if I, if you say two days a week times four, that's eight, that's 20, you know, that's 24,000 a month, times 12 is around 288,000. The, the one thing that I do know is, and I agree with Steve on the landfill, and, you know, we're supposed to do a, a study on that, I think a year ago or more, right? We're supposed to do some kind of a, I mean, we've all been running, I think.
Five-year permit review, the joint JPA.
Okay, so, so, but, but I also know that, you know, just taking a look at what's going on in the county, especially with the fire recently, the bug kill that's, is starting to, people are starting to drop trees, they can't move them around too much. And so there's gonna be a call for a greater need to, to process all of that. So I'm just kinda thinking that probably, probably a pretty decent move right about now.
I mentioned it before, I'll mention it again, I need to answer Supervisor Olivera's question that I did not answer, which is, well, can you take the bug-killed trees and throw them in the tub grinder and redeploy them? I don't know, I've never done it before. And if it doesn't kill the bugs, then no. Bug-killed trees should go to the waste energy facility. Because that type of cremation is a secure method of getting rid of the bugs. And I don't want to infect at-risk trees. But if we really want to heal the forest, the best thing that we can do is thin it. Okay? Now, going back to your question and what I wanted to say was that when we first put the landfill together, we borrowed the money to put the landfill together. That was on borrowed money. We paid that money back. We also started gathering funds and saving money for current operations and for future securitization of our sites and for, and for expansion of the landfill. I believe through, call it neglect, call it mismanagement, whatever, we have been eating into that capital fund for the future. We don't have to. But we've got to get on an even footing first. Worst-case scenario to me is we'd be back where we were in 1990 where we borrow the money to open up the new cell, if that's the decision of this board, that we want to continue to landfill our solid waste, as opposed to off-haul our solid waste. My answer to that is we'll do whatever is in the best financial interest of the citizens of the county. Right? And what might be in the best interest of the citizens of the county is for five years off-hauling that. Because right now, there is severe competition and what I would consider to be funding of solid waste costs in San Joaquin County, in Merced, up and down the state. There have been both private and public entities that have gone into the landfill business with gusto, foreseeing that small counties would be going out of business and even large cities would be going out of this business. And they thought they would make a killing. So they invested a significant amount of money to develop and permit these landfills. They didn't get the type of waste that they thought they were going to get because of the increase in recycles, recyclables and diversions. So right now, yes, landfill costs are very low, artificially so. There's a landfill I can go to 2,600, $26, $26 a ton, which is phenomenally inexpensive. Our costs at Rock Creek are probably three times that today, but they don't have to be. Okay? So I think that we should be disposing of our solid waste, which is really the worst of the worst of what we take in, should be where it is in the best interest of the county, be it onsite or offsite. Am I there yet? No, I'm not there yet. But I would appreciate any help and I'd let you look at what I have put together so far that essentially got delayed on September 10th.
Why, what have you been doing?
I don't know. Chilling, hanging out, trying to put my pants out of fire, I've burned up all my pants now.
Twirling dervish, right?
Yeah.
What else can I answer?
Thank you for coming back from your meeting, answer these questions.
I know what they're talking about. Debris flows.
Good. So, any other questions?
Just one comment, can you find out whether or not this process will take care of the bark beetle problem, if we can grind those trees? Can you ask somebody?
Yeah, I'll try, I'll ask, I'll ask foresters to see if they know.
Yeah, because I have a tremendous problem up in District 3.
Oh, yes, you do.
No, I mean, I've got an immediate tremendous problem, District 3.
I know that.
Yes.
I know that. I can drive by it and see them, I can spot them. And you haven't seen anything yet. I expect a 30% mortality within the next two years, regardless of how much water we get this winter. And that's your corridor alone. So the fun is just beginning.
Yeah, I wish that the grinder would take care of the, I don't see how they would though.
I don't think so either, I've dealt with them a lot, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I mean.
The, the old ti, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize for that. The old timers used to tell me when we were cutting wood that in good winters, what pushes them out is the heavier sap is coming up, pushes the bark beetles out and they die. And I've cut down a lot of trees with bark beetle. If you use them for firewood and you keep them in your pile, you have to, you have to bark them and burn the bark and split the wood and you're okay with it. So putting them in a grinder, I didn't, I'm not an expert per se, but I would say no. Because all you're doing is you're spreading the bark beetles all over the place.
Unless you grind them up. But again, the reason that these trees have bark beetles in the first place is because they don't have enough water to be healthy.
Correct.
Okay, so the tree mortality due to bark beetle in and of itself is not necessarily an evil. Leaving them in place to be a torch to the canopy where the entire forest is at jeopardy is.
All right, so, any more questions on the tub grinder? No, public? Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Crowvis.
Bill McManus, Hanford Hill. I've got a couple of questions, I, excuse me, I'm a simple guy, but not totally devoid of trying to structure a question to, to get to the answer. What I keep hearing in all this, and I'm not denying any of it, you've got all these multiple limbs, roots, tentacles, whatever, in this solid waste problem, and none of them have ever, you don't see the end to it. One of the notes that I made is, by continuing to do this, are you buying in too far to ever get out of this business? You know, are you spending money to limit your future options? And one of the examples of that that I didn't fully understand was if you close the landfill, that there's, I guess you can call it a legacy care expense, that you have to continue keeping track of that landfill. Now, does that legacy expense, is it the same for a landfill that's half-full? Or is it gonna cost twice as much if you close a full landfill? And so maybe in looking at that, you decide now's the time to close it and do something else. It's just a thought. The third item that I wrote down is when we're talking about modifying the forest and getting rid of the ladder to the canopies and doing all this kind of stuff, you know, I, I'm not real familiar with the lay of the land in the rest of the county as far as ownership, but coming from Hanford Hill, I know that if you go a mile in any direction, you're on federal land. So is, is the county allowed to just go out on federal land and start harvesting chaparral and manzanita?
Yes, we have broad powers over federal land.
I'm sorry?
Yes, we have broad powers over federal land.
Good. Then I've got a list of things I'd like you to handle with the feds, Supervisor Wright.
No problem.
And I expect, I expect it to be, you know, done forthwith.
Next week.
But, I mean, it's a good idea, but, you know, in the reality of it all, is that something we can do? It'd be great if we could, but as soon as you start touching a national forest or BLM land, you're gonna have about 30 agencies down on you. Everywhere from, you know, Department of the, the Water People, Ecologist, you know, Entomologist, you know, geez, did the beetle get ground up in the tub grinder? I don't know. Those are questions that hopefully we don't have to answer. So I agree with Supervisor Kearney that if you could make it simple enough for someone like me to understand with some analysis and maybe a multi-track analysis of, you know, here's where the landfill's going, we're gonna fill it up by such and such a date, and then for so many years after that, we have to take care of it, here's the cost. Okay, we shut the landfill down now, what's that gonna cost and how long do we have to take care of it? What's the total? You know, do we need a tub grinder in here a couple of days a week to do something? What's the payback for that? And all of this is within the context of a, of a county that's actually declining in population. So it's not like we're gonna have huge garbage needs in the future. I, I think it's, you know, it's that point of diminishing returns where you can chase it for so long and then either you can't get out of it or the whole thing just kinda collapses. So I agree with Supervisor Kearney and I would like to study something like that. I'm sure it'd take me a lot longer to get through it, but at least I'd feel better about it.
Would you do it for free?
I'm sorry?
I mean, really, if you do it for free, we can set that up.
If you do.
Are you volunteering?
Am I volunteering to what, to do the analysis?
Yeah.
No.
It's actually.
Actually, my runway is not that long, so.
You know what, one thing you start to learn when you get involved in this is it's much more technical than throwing, you know, the milk carton in the garbage bin. And there are so many facets to this, and I suppose that's why Jeff has me teetering on this right now. Because I, I don't know that we, we should continue Rock Creek landfill by putting our solid waste in there. Okay, that being said, we are under state direction to get things that go into our solid waste landfill out of it. And part of it's the greenways, part of it's your aluminum cans. And if you ever, if you ever go visit one of these, the one next to you, I visited it, spent some time in it one day and I watched them dump garbage in it, and you think, oh, nobody throws their beer can in a garbage anymore. There they are, they're going in there. There's all sorts of things that can be recycled.
Is that Red Hill or Millers?
No, there's a transfer station by you and Arnold.
Oh, at Avery, okay.
Avery, big department, I should never get those mixed up. And so people, so we're not recycling what we should out of there, but we're under state direction to do that. And we are getting better at it, Jeff's right, and what we still have a ways to go. So once we've got to the point where we're not putting anything in the garbage landfill that shouldn't be there, we've got these piles of things that need to be dealt with. And we, and he's, he's talking about one that's green waste. But there's also other things, like if you, if you get in your car and you take a tour of Rock Creek landfill, there's piles of cement blocks, I mean, tons of it, okay? It's not as easy as just going and chipping it out because it's got rebar in a lot of it. So that's gotta be extracted. And there are sites, there's, that I visited one in Sacramento, that has a facility that crushes that up and they make, like they were making base for it so they could put a building on top of it. So these things have gotta be taken out of the landfill. Now, if we get to the point where we're, where we should be with the landfill, then maybe we should be taking it out of the county and putting it somewhere else because it's just not worth it to deal with it out there. But to answer your other questions, we can't just cover it up and leave it because these babies produce methane gas. Okay, so like if you, if you ever go to Lodi down Harney Lane and you look at those big hills out there, you see that little piping system? They're actually harvesting methane out of that. And I think they can harvest enough out of it to actually sell it. We don't have enough out there to produce it, so, and, you know, Jeff will be more technical on it than I will, but to get rid of that, we're gonna have to burn it off. And they're gonna have to do that for years. That won't just stop next year. He just said 30 years, and that's the first time I've heard exactly how many years we have to maintain it, but that stuff out there is in sort of like a bladder, okay? All the garbage has been put in something and then when we cover it up, I used to think it, that, oh, you know, when you throw your garbage away, it all rots and dust to dust, ashes to ashes, that kind of thing. But that's not true at all. I've talked to these garbage professionals and they've opened up landfills and they can read newspapers from 40 years ago that are in there and they don't rot, okay? They're, they're just sitting in these bladders, but that still doesn't stop the methane from building up. So there's a responsibility to take care of that. And don't even get me started on toxic waste because that's another half hour that I'll get, get on a rant that they've gotta deal with.
That's why, that's why I'm suggesting, you know, like a parallel analysis of different hole paths, not.
Well, we have to do a study and he's, he's invited me to his office and I'm gonna take him up on that. And somehow we've gotta find the money to pay for it. Because, because we, as I brought up earlier, when I looked at the budget for 2014, the year before I was sworn in, they were told to start to work on how to take care of this. I'm coming in a year later and I'm getting busy on it and that's why I'm on this rant. We can't ignore this. Does this solve all of our issues? Well, he has me kinda going on it because of the fire issues and so I've maybe softened up a little bit on it after he started talking about that. And he knows he did that, he's laughing at me while he's sitting out there. about that. And he knows he did that, he's laughing at me while he's sitting out there. But, but the fact is, we have to make a call going forward on how to deal with our garbage.
So, so having said all of this, you know...
So you can tell that Steve was on the solid waste task force, and, and he knows probably more about it than any, any of us board members. And you can tell that he's also, he's into it.
Well, I'm passionate about this. It's something that needs correcting.
So, so I think that, I think we got the right person on, on the job for that, got the right person on the job for what Jeff is doing, and I think we should probably try to make a motion so we can get past this.
Well, I guess, if I could just finish off one thing, that, in order to encapsulate it all, if, if some information is good, more information is better in this case. So I look forward to seeing more information come out and kind of a comparative look at what, what the decisions should be, because it's long-term and short-term.
You're going to get all that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. So, go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. I only said about a third, they cut, they shut me out.
You know how they are, I mean, yeah.
I was getting going, and I was...
Yeah, yeah, hey, they got a cocktail to go to. Cost-benefit analysis, yes, is a good idea. The other thing is that nobody brought up it, and it was mentioned...
We're going over to your house, Peter.
Pardon me?
We're coming over to your house.
Yeah, sure. Cost-benefit analysis, but something that, I mentioned it before, and the gentleman who's collecting waste right now, he's all for it, would look into it. Patterson, waste to energy, that's a moneymaker. In the long run, I don't know if it's going to solve your immediate problems, but for the long run, that would be a moneymaker. Hey, if corn's good enough to burn, make energy out of it, pine needles, manzanita, renewable energy, folks, and there are establishments that they turn energy, garbage into energy. Patterson is a long drive. I've seen a couple of presentations from them, because they were selling it for, not Martinez, anyway, Contra Costa County, it's got voted down, although it's study, it's old, so it's perhaps to be updated. It's a coal mine, from tires to all the vegetation. They burn aluminum. Aluminum burns pretty good, by the way, okay? For what it's worth. But yes, you are blessed with renewable energy that would help make this county fire safe, safer, no guarantee. And I don't know if it's going to take care of your landfill's problem right away, but unless you consider it something like that, for all these other counties, they don't know what to do to, you know, the green waste, there's a potential there. It's not a long drive, or take a look at its interest, they'd be more than happy to come out and sell it to you guys. I'm not saying sell it, but make a presentation to you, because that's, energy's going to be renewable. Every year, you're going to have the same problem, it's not going to go away. Thank you. Hey, this way you're going to make the big money, come on, solve problems.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Board comments? Anything else?
No, I, I will make a motion. I'm just asking, before I do that, though, let you and I get together, if somebody else wants to come with us, that's great, and, and do an analysis before we do any more capital purchases.
I think he's already got the next one in mind.
Well, I know, I know he does, but I think it's important, before we start sinking a lot more money, we have an understanding. And if we have to figure out a way to rush this through, maybe we should do that, Jeff.
Again, I don't disagree with what you're saying. The order that you're asking me to do it in could very well put handcuffs on me, and that would, that would, that worries me a little bit. I don't want to slow down what I think are critically needed expenditures. The one thing that I want to say is that the purchase of the tub grinder for $470,000, lot of money, again, if I can sign that PO tomorrow, that purchase comes with about $70,000 of incentives. It gives us extended warranty, it gives us extended training, it gives us some extra parts that wouldn't normally be included in there. A used tub grinder of the same size, I could purchase for about $350,000, okay? Subtract the $70,000 in incentives, you have a $400,000 purchase, brand new, with warranty versus a $350,000 used purchase. To me, that's not worth it at all. And if we have to go out of the green waste business, it still has value. That's number one. Number two, I'm hesitant to make a decision that limits our future, meaning that you guys talk about closing the landfill at Rock Creek, that's great. We'll close the landfill at Rock Creek. That's not going to stop us from operating the materials transfer facility, the MRF. We, that's a, that's a mandate that we have, and if we don't do it with our own forces with that investment that we have in place, then we will be paying somebody else to operate that facility for us, okay? If we go out of business with Rock Creek, then we're looking at potentially mandatory curbside collection in this county, and I don't know if that's something that we are ready to face in the immediate future, in terms of a decision point to make. I know this county, I haven't been here very long, but it's a, it's an independent county, and many of these people are going to be driving their garbage to Rock Creek, even if it takes them two hours each way, they're going to be doing that to the day they die, okay? And so that's going to continue. I would hate to take that away when they're doing it, and in a way, it's helping us. It doesn't help us from an air quality perspective, but it really helps us from a cost of operations issue, it really does. Again, I don't think that this purchase of this grinder, this tub grinder, necessarily locks us into any decision in the future. And some of the expenditures, the capital expenditures that I, can I say this, on fire to make, really have to do with the Red Hill antics. I need a water system there. I need to prepare a pad on which I can process that green waste, so I don't bring dirt into it and destroy its, its value.
I agree with you.
And I mean, I don't want to slow those down.
Okay, well, I agree with you, Jeff.
Okay. And I'm perfectly willing to slow down whatever you want to slow down, but not that.
I guess I am gripping my teeth when I spend this money, knowing what I do about the industry.
Okay.
I agree with you, I'll take back what I say, and I still want to make the motion.
Thank you.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney, seconded by Supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
I seized the moment, didn't I?
[laughing]
So did everybody vote aye, or?
Yes, we all voted aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, I'll make the purchase.
I'd like you for that very extensive, in-depth presentation, appreciate it.
Is baby garbage to you, is fine bread and butter?
All right. Okay, so we're on to board member announcements. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
I'd like to be very brief with these. I attended the First Five meeting and a Mother Load Job Training Agency meeting, both great groups, they've done a lot of work, you know, kind of post-fire, you know, the Mother Load Job Training Agency, a lot of folks down there around the cleanup crews at our local office, and First Five has, has been out in the communities doing a tremendous amount of work around families and, and young kids. So I'd just like to appreciate their efforts. And that's all I have for today.
I, I just want to bring one thing up, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. We, a few months ago, when our county council was out on leave, I brought up that I would start paying some attention to the cannabis issues, and I did. I put quite a bit of effort into it, and I would like to ask the boards, poll the board, I guess is the appropriate way to say it, if we could bring back a discussion of creating a cannabis ordinance going forward. I think we have some, a little more guidance with the presentation from RCRC, and if you look on RCRC's website, I do believe, I just got this back, so I didn't have time to check it, they've got some sample ordinances, and I, I think that I put some effort into understanding, including meeting with both sides of the issues. I know there are some ways to approach this. When county council was out, I was also asked to wait until she got back by her colleagues in the council's office, because she had also put a lot of effort into it previously. But I think the county does need to go forward with something, and bringing in the attitudes and thoughts of the stakeholders. And if the board has an interest, I'd like to ask that we create a new study session. I know the last one ended up a little differently, but I think we can take it forward, and I also think it's incumbent on us to do something properly.
I, I'd like to comment on Supervisor Kearney's comments. That study session, I totally agree. I would like to see participation from the different departments, Sheriff's Department, Cop Alliance, that type of, that type of involvement. I'd like to add that to Supervisor Kearney.
I just want to clarify that that would be, that you would be adding to the request for a study session to have all of these departments involved in the study session, or would you like for my office to reach out to the departments in advance of the study session, and then schedule the study session once I've had an opportunity to get everyone back up to speed with where things have progressed since we had the discussion in April?
I think that'd probably be one of the best avenues to take.
Okay.
Yeah, reach out to the stakeholders outside of the board meeting.
And then we'll schedule a study session in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Yep. Well, somebody have jobs?
No, I mean, just with the county council, is there any, I mean, do you have enough information, what the, how this state is going to go? I mean, is there any other issues that we need to be aware of?
I would recommend that we would bring all of that to your attention in the study session.
Okay. And, but, so bringing it now, is good timing for, for you?
As good as any.
Well, I think that, you know, coming with things like, how do we recognize the industry? How do, you know, everybody keeps bringing up all the taxes that are supposed to flow like revenues, how do you deal with it, what's appropriate, and both sides of the coin, too. I don't believe anybody's going to be satisfied with everything in it. And, and, you know, and the attitudes of our law enforcement, too, that Mike brought up, I completely agree with that. Environmental issues that maybe we haven't addressed, that a lot of it was set up with RCRC, and how do we deal with the state regs, because they left a lot of holes in, you know, how we attach to their regulations, was my feeling.
So just so I'm clear, what this, what the study session would be on, last time in April, staff had started to prepare an ordinance, and we wanted direction. What I'm hearing is that you would like for my office to reach out to some stakeholders and to the affected departments in advance of the study session, and then bring, bring some alternate language to the board for consideration. Is that, is that accurate, or would you, or would you rather the study session to get direct, direction from the board on the specific things that we were questioning in April, before reaching out to the stakeholders and the other affected departments?
I'd prefer to just, I mean, get some language, so we can have something to look at, would be good. I mean, because the state has taken action, so we're in a different place, I think, than we were before, so I think having some language to look at would be good.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
I'm thinking you probably have a pretty good idea on what that is already.
I'm sorry?
I'm thinking you probably have a pretty good idea on what...
Well, we have, we have a variety of, of examples, samples, whether it's from RCRC, the draft that we had already been working on, so I will...
But also other counties that have already been through the...
Correct.
Processes and court system and all of that.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay. Okay.
I had a pretty busy week. I was able to attend a meeting with solid waste issues that we just got done discussing, and received an education. And I want to commend Supervisor Kearney for his, his efforts in educating me and other people involved in this decision. I did make several appearances at fundraisers for Amador County, for victims of the fire, and cooperating with those events sponsored by the Calaveras Board of Realtors. I was able to actually be part of a, an event produced by Common Grounds to assist our victims. And I announced a softball charity tournament held at the fairgrounds to do what I could to help support those charities. I have several meetings scheduled for next week, and I'll, I'll save some time, but I do plan on attending the Calaveras County Business Association seminar at the fairgrounds on the second. I don't know how much time I'll be able to spend there, depending on their curriculum and their, their schedule. That's about it. Supervisor Pate?
I attended the IHSS meeting that was held yesterday, and we currently have three openings on our membership. I'll probably address with them, they wanted to take a look at, we have consumer and provider, have to take a look at that and see if we want to make it by district. IHS is doing a lot of outreach, they were at a health fair, and they are going to be at some senior functions here in the next month, as they go out and educate people about what IHSS provides and the support services available. There's some discussion about those involved in the Butte Fire, and having staff taking a look at who they're helping and what services are available and things along that line. And I think some kind of letter going out would be helpful, and going out to these folks as well, and to make sure that all of our bases are covered. I attended the Child Support Agency meeting yesterday, and we, again, this agency is doing a lot of outreach and communication with the citizenry as to what they, who they are and what they do. And we also approved our MOU with a particular union, and that was settled. We, I attended Maury's retirement luncheon that was held up in Arnold at the Snowshoe Blue Lake Springs. That was a very nice event, the Arnold friends hosted it, and Shirley, I'd like to talk to you about doing something similar for Maury here. She provided a very nice history, her seventeen years of history with the library system, and, and anyway, it was a very nice presentation, a little tongue-in-cheek, so I, it was very well-received. I have a COG meeting next Wednesday, we have a new meeting time, it's at 5:30, and that's here in this board chambers. The Highway Four Water Committee meeting will be next Thursday, that's at 5 o'clock at the, at the Calaveras County Water District Office. I, too, will be attending the Business Symposium on Monday, and that's all I have.
Okay.
I don't know if I mentioned it last week, but on 10/17, I, I attended and provided the PA for Oktoberfest in Valley Springs. That was put on by the Valley Springs Area Business Association and the Calaveras Rotary, and it was a really successful event for the first year. I mean, they had probably five or six hundred people there, I thought it was really good. It was at La Catinta. On the 20th, I attended a meeting at the CUSD District Office for Resilient Schools, pretty interesting.
Um, pretty interesting, uh, concept that they got going there, and, um, it actually turned into a couple of other ser- uh, series of meetings during the week. So, um, and Kevin Hessler is pushing that. Um, I think there's, uh, we are one of seven, or eight, uh, school districts in the state that's in that program, is being considered for that program, so, um, it makes a lot of sense, uh, in some cases, and then there's, uh, challenges, of course, like with any other new type of program, but I, I really like it so far. Uh, on the twenty-first, I went to the Rock for Relief fundraiser for the fire victims in, uh, at Kennedy Mines in, um, into, in, in Amador County. Um, from what I understand, they raised about $30,000, um, that one night, from ten o'clock to five o'clock PM, so it was a really good event. Um, and, um, on the twenty-second, I met with this, uh, lady, her name is Sylvia, and she, uh, was, uh, forwarded to me by another person, it's just, it's just an example of, of the folks that are, I would call, so far, the unmet needs folks. She is a caretaker, uh, she caretakes her husband, or, and, uh, two other people, two other family members, um, uh, and she has three dogs, so she can't find a place to rent anywhere. Um, she is currently staying in a hotel room in Lodi, because that's where her insurance company put her up at. Her house was burnt down completely right up there where we went, um, just off Jesus Maria Road. And her husband's in a convalescent home, uh, because he has, uh, COPD and some heart issues. And the other two, uh, folks that she caretakes are spread out in different places, because she can no longer take care of them in a hotel room. And, um, she's just waiting to get back on her property, and, you know, to get back to where she can start doing, I guess, you know, her normal life, which is taking care of those three people. That's her job and her life. So, uh, when I talked to her, she, I, she says, "I, I just don't know what to do. I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do." And, uh, started crying at least three times on the phone. And so when I met with her, it was mainly just the, the, the idea of me paying attention to her. I walked her over to her insurance company to make sure that they were giving her the service that she needed, and it seemed like she was feeling much better just off of a, maybe a half-hour visit, and, uh, was able to start functioning in a, in a little better situation. So, I'm waiting for her call back right now to find out if she had some meetings to go to, and, and I'll be looking forward to meeting with her again. Um, on the twenty-third, I went to Mines on the Main here in San Andreas, the, uh, Calaveras, um, County, uh, Chamber of Commerce put it on, it was a, a fun event. Um, downtown San Andreas doesn't look any better than that, when, when there's an event like that down there. There's a lot of people having a good time. Uh, the folks that put it on, you know, Stacy Johnson in particular, uh, everybody's pretty tired, but, uh, mustered up enough strength to be able to do this. They had, uh, probably doubled their attendance from last year, so it was, it was a lot of fun. Um, on the twenty-fourth, which is, uh, let's see, I met yesterday with, um, these two ladies up in, uh, Mountain Ranch, Felicia and Coral. Um, they're doing outreach to folks that haven't been processed at all yet, um, and those folks are the folks that are out in tents, or huddled around a, a motorhome that's parked out in the middle of a piece of property, because they're either renters, or they don't know that there's anything for them. And, um, and so, uh, Felicia was able to reach about thirty of them, uh, in the past couple of days, and got them signed up with FEMA, and, um, and, and a lot of them just don't understand the whole process. So, uh, she did a great job. Well, Coral, uh, is, is working for Amador County, she got a, a grant to come over here and do outreach, and so she's, her, I, I just hooked, uh, Coral and Felicia up, because Felicia's got a really good, uh, understanding of the area, and, uh, they, they hit it off real good, and I think that, um, it's gonna produce good results. Um, in Butte Fire, um, I know that, uh, Mary forgot to mention today, that they have 125 packets that they're gonna, that her, uh, her group is gonna be putting out to, uh, when they do their outreach, uh, and the packets have a lot of information in it for these folks that either are afraid to come in and get processed, or, or maybe just don't know how to do that, but, um, the packets are a good idea, and I'm glad that they're doing that. So she, they've put together 125 of these packets that they're gonna be putting out, you know, on their outreach. Uh, one of the things that, that, um, I was in a meeting yesterday with, with the emergency response, because, uh, tonight we're supposed to get some rain, uh, it's not expected to be that much, it's, uh, expected over eight-hour period to be about, uh, just a half an inch or just maybe a little bit more, but it's not expected to have these, this major issues. But the real problem is, if we do get a gusher, or if a couple of systems meet and it becomes a, a bigger system, even if we put out an emergency flash on, that comes out on your cell phone and, and the radio and TV and all that, there's a lot of folks up there that don't have any of that, and they are, um, vulnerable. So, so the, the, the idea is to try to figure out what, what we can do to, um, maximize our, um, capabilities of, of contacting these folks, or at least getting them, uh, something that they can listen to. Um, and, and right now, uh, the best thing to do, the best thing is, is radio, so at least they can hear. And so the, I mentioned earlier, uh, the, the radio station, and the radio station again is KOSO FM 93.1. The emergency system will be, uh, put on, these folks are contracted with the National Weather Service, and there will be, uh, that, that news flash, or that emergency warning flash will come over that station. So, if you hear of anybody in, outside here, if you hear of anybody that doesn't have any communication whatsoever, at least make sure, at least the people that are up there has a radio that they can listen to, and know where to listen for these emergency, um, communications. Um, I know the Red Cross was giving out these packets at one time that had a little, little, uh, an emergency radio in there, I don't know if they still have that or not. Yeah. Um, so, um, we're still not through this at all. And, um, communication is a big issue, erosion is a huge issue, so we just need, need to be, uh, aware of that and be careful. So, that's all I have. Shirley?
Um, I just wanted the board to know that I will be out of the office beginning Monday, November second, uh, through Monday, November sixteenth. Um, during that time, Assistant CA O'Brien Moss will handle day-to-day operations and will sir, um, sit in at the next two board meetings. I will be checking email daily and responding as necessary.
Nothing to report?
Karen?
Nothing.
All right, thank you for coming today. Meeting adjourned.